Chelsea, you're in?
I hope so.
Yeah. The parade's clear as now.
Did you look? I can go.
No, sit down.
Should've just said yeah.
You've given it for almost forty minutes.
Yeah.
Call this meeting back to order. Like to welcome everyone here tonight. We're going to begin this meeting with a word of prayer. And we're gonna follow the prayer with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask that everyone that can, please stand with us for both. May I say, Son and Father, we just praise you for this time. We can come and discuss these important issues of Effingham County. We just ask you would give us all a level heads, that we would do what's best for Effingham County, Lord. We just ask you continue to bless our country, our leaders, our servicemen and women, and our law enforcement to keep us safe, Lord. Give us all safe travel home in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And for those that maybe got here late, we will probably, once again, apologize. We've never had this problem before because this is the first year we've been in this building. And we've normally been able to have these meetings while the parade's going on. But obviously this year, we realized it, and we realized it a little too late. So, once again, apologies from the county and the staff. Ms. Katie, our agenda, are there any items we need to add or remove?
No changes to the agenda.
And call for a motion to approve this agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Higgins, others in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Minutes from September nineteenth, corrections or additions? Call for a motion to approve these minutes?
Make a motion for approval.
Motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith. All is in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. All items presented tonight will be presented again at a Board of Commissioners meeting. That meeting is also a public hearing. Items which are approved, as well as denied, will move forward to the commissioners. We'd like to ask that when the item of your concern is called, that you would come forward to the podium, that you would state your name, as well as sign your name for the record. If nothing further? Under new business, item number one is a public hearing for Alan Cote. Request to rezone twenty-three point thirty-eight acres from AR two to AR one to allow for the placement of a second home for an immediate family member dislocated at one-ten Buford Hill Road. This is the first district. Good evening, sir.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Did I say that right?
Um, you did. My name is Alan Cody. I know how to state that for the record.
Can you just tell us something about your plans?
Uh, yes, sir. So, my in-laws are not originally from Georgia, but they got here as fast as they could. And we were originally gonna build an addition, but with the COVID building prices, that didn't quite work out the way we planned. And it was more cost-effective to put a separate residence on my property. So, we learned that we had to apparently go from AR two to AR one in order for that to occur. So, that's the purpose of the rezoning.
Thank you. Ms. Katie, do you have anything you wish to add to that?
Yes, as the applicant said, they are looking to rezone to AR one in order to allow for a second dwelling for an immediate family member. This parcel more than meets the five-acre threshold for AR one. It does access Buford Hill Road, but it is not part of the platted subdivision. And this is, this is a better choice for the applicant because it does not add another lot accessing Buford Hill's subdivision. And because of the amount of wetlands, it makes it a little bit tricky to cut out an entire separate usable acre. Staff is recommending approval.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments at this time?
I just wanted to clarify, the intent's to keep it as one parcel now.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? Call for a motion?
I think we have one.
We do? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
My name is Willie Wright. I'm a deacon and a trustee of Eden Missionary Baptist Church in Eden, Georgia, which is the owner of Buford Hill Cemetery, a four-acre tract of property that joins Mr. Alan Colt's property. We understand the zoning requests and have no problem with the zoning requests. But our question is to you as the planning board this afternoon, if the ownership of the property changed, would this same zoning apply? The zoning request states here that add one additional dwelling. But if the ownership changes, will that same request still apply? Are the new owners, when they come in and take over the property, will they be able to develop it as a subdivision of some other commercial-type use?
All right, so thank you, Mr. Wright. Would you like to take that, Ms. Katie?
This particular parcel zoning to AR one is going to allow them only the additional dwelling for the immediate family member. Any future subdivision, either by these owners or future owners, would have to then come back through the board process and rezone and submit development concept plans. So, as, as an AR one parcel, no, they would not be able to put in a subdivision.
So, my understanding, what the clerk just said, is that it wouldn't apply if the new owner, or the ownership changed, that if they wanted to use it for a subdivision or anything of this use. Am I correct? Is that what the board, that's what you're, that's the statement that, in reply?
If, in the future, if it changes ownership and is to go beyond two dwellings, they'll have to reapply, they'll have to come back through this exact same process and make a request for, for more dwellings to further subdivide that property.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Call for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Zipper. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item two is a public hearing for Wendell A. Kessler. His agent for MB Development requests to rezone twenty-three point three acres from PD to AR one to allow for a single-family home site located off Old River Road. This is the first district. Ms. Donegan, you have any information for this?
Yes, the applicant, the twenty-three point three acres you see outlined here was originally rezoned PD as part of the subdivision. The applicant wishes to separate it from the PD and use it as a residence. It's, we haven't not received any comment from neighboring residents, other than one, which is someone who requested that the applicant then made to only access Old River Road. One of staff's conditions is that there be an access agreement to Lake Gene, as this parcel is known, for any sort of maintenance having to do with the drainage of the subdivision. It's, it's of sufficient size, it meets the threshold for AR one. And that's about it.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir?
My name's Wendell Kessler. Stonegate subdivision was developed by me. This was eighty-something acres of land. And it's divided by a power line easement. And when I came to the county to develop it, it was developed as a planned unit development. The commission either didn't understand, but anyhow, the, the Stonegate ended at the power line easement. And then through time, all the lots were developed. The common areas was done. The sewage, Stonegate's unique, and it has its own sewage treatment facility, which that has been sold. Everything has been sold and developed. But these pieces of property from that power line easement over remain. So, it really shouldn't have, and in the beginning, it was pointed out that there was land up there that I asked specifically not to be zoned. It got overlooked. So, basically, this all needs to just be put back as an AR one, which is what it was originally. Now, what she's mentioning, the drainage for Stonegate goes into this big lake. And we have talked about this. And we do need to come up with something that would be acceptable to the county's attorney so that that drainage easement from the Stonegate into Lake Gene, which then goes into the Little Aguechee River, is acceptable to the county.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Questions, comments at this time?
Uh, I've got one. Was there a map that went along with the original PD, PUD zoning at all that was? And I saw the text in the, in the supplemental, but it...
There's a number of maps that exist. Number one of the original property that was purchased. And then the map of Stonegate of the hundred and thirty-four lots ended, basically, at the power line easement. Then through time, there's a storage building that's been built. And then there's another building that's been built. But there's not technically a map of this piece of property. It's just kind of what's left. And we've taken the common areas that have been deeded to the Stonegate amenities, the lands that have been sold off to what was then Lakeside Water, the lots, the common area. And it agrees with the twenty-three point three acres that the county tax assessor is showing that's left. It's a big finger of wetlands that goes back, it's lake. We, we pretty well agree that it's twenty-three point three acres, but there's not a specific plat of this land. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I was more so going to the original zoning map that would've showed the entire boundary of the PD.
That was the eighth, yes. When I bought this from my wife's Uncle Tommy's share house, there was a map of the entire eighty-something acres. And also, then it goes out to Highway eighty and Old River Road. Then there was a tract that was sold out of that. So, it was encompassing of a lot more than this.
And you're talking about just one home site, correct?
That's correct. Because technically, under the planned unit development, what was approved was a hundred and thirty-four homes, a clubhouse, all of that has done. So, technically, as I understand it, under the planned unit development, we couldn't really build another residence.
And, and that home will access Old River Road?
That is correct. Which is the only, what only access this land has.
The, the home site's gonna be in that little peninsula behind the, the subdivision there?
It's actually on the island behind the lake. There's an, there's kind of a garage back there now. But there's, um, there's, Donnie Bradshaw has been back there and approved it, but there's also sewer and water available to that site.
Katie, and you putting your marker on it?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kessler, are you talking about the structure right over here?
You'll have to take a step back, Mr. Kessler, and look, look up above you.
Right about here? There's...
Right there?
Yeah. Okay.
Good, good. That's it, right there.
And the access is down that power line easement?
Power line easement, there's a strip of land between the lake, right there, that power line easement.
Thank you, sir.
Which is, which is an existing road that's been there for years, and it's gated.
Any further questions this time?
The only problem that some people don't like is that they use it as a cut-through to go out. They're not gonna be able to do it. Now, that subdivision drains into that lake, and you're willing to... It, there's actually three places it drains, Alan, but Stonegate has three sections. The pebblestone section drains into Lake Gene. And then ultimately, then into the run of the Little Aguechee. And that's the reason those culverts going out there, the people that I sell it to will have to have a drainage easement that will have to be approved by the county's attorney to...
Okay.
Be adequate.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? And call for a motion?
Uh, make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
My second.
Second, Mr. Zipper. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item three is a public hearing for Effingham Industrial Development Authority. As agent for Effingham County Board of Commissioners, request a variance to exceed the hundred square foot maximum for a sign on an I-one zone parcel located on Savannah. Portside Industrial Parkway Zone I-one is the first district.
I'm going to recuse myself from this one.
Yes, sir. The records show that Mr. Thompson is recusing himself. Ms. Thompson, Ms. Donegan?
The applicant is requesting to install a sign right here at Savannah Portside Industrial Parkway. The maximum size for the sign is a hundred square feet. This signage is running just a little over ten percent more than that, at a hundred and twelve point six square feet. The design of the sign, though, is meant to make it not only aesthetically nice, but also serves a safety feature in that it's visible for truck traffic coming in and out of the complex. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? Questions, comments from the board? And call for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Motion for approval. Do I hear a second?
My second.
Second, Mr. Higgins. All is in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item four is a public hearing for Scott B. Eishen. Request to rezone four point seven-two acres from AR one to AR two to allow for the separation of a home site located at seven-zero-eight-three Clough Kildare Road, this is the third district. Ms. Donegan?
Yes, the applicant wishes to split this parcel. The parcel itself is a non-conforming AR one lot in that it doesn't meet the five-acre threshold. So, of course, by dividing it, neither new lot would be five acres. Therefore, they must rezone to AR two. Staff's recommending approval.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Scott Eishen. Basically, that's, that's the jet. I kinda wanted to split the property and probably sell about half of it off. It's already got a well on it. It's been perked. It's just doing what I need to do. So, I'm asking for approval.
All right, thank you. Questions, comments at this time? So, the, the existing home, you will remain living there?
That's correct, yes.
Your home site? Gotcha. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Everybody was tested to that.
Call for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
My second.
Second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you, sir. Item five is a public hearing for Terry Greiner. Request to rezone point-two-three acres from B-three to AR one to allow for a recombination of parcels located on Go-Kart Road and Pound Road, this is the third district. Ms. Donegan?
Yes, what the applicant here is doing, can't quite see it without zooming, but there's a small outbuilding right about here that actually runs over the property line. The applicant is looking to add just this little quarter-acre or less sliver to sort of correct the property line in there. There's this structure right there. Because the applicant's property is currently zoned B-three, it needs to be rezoned to the part that he is adding to the adjacent parcel so that it can be combined. This property has recently been before the planning board and was requesting to rezone the entirety of it to I-one. Staff has consulted with the county attorney, and it does not, it's not subject to the six-month prohibition on reapplication because the scope and the intent of this rezoning request is so different. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Greiner?
Yes.
Do you need, do you have anything to add to that? That's it? Questions, comments from the board?
So, the new property line will put that structure, meeting setback requirements as well?
Sir?
That, that new property line will meet setback requirements from the newly created property line as well?
We, we pretty sure that, yeah, yeah.
So, the dotted line, is that the new property line?
That's the other one, I think.
We just moved that one pin over thirty foot, and that gives them about fifteen, twenty foot instead of them having to move their building and all.
Anything further from the board?
I mean, I just moved one property line, thirty foot. Instead of the property line going through his building and everything, I moved that one corner thirty foot. That'll give them about fifteen, twenty foot on the outside of their building, and they can go all the way around the pond. The pond won't be tied in with the other people's land. It's just a straight line. I just moved one pin, thirty foot, and that gave them enough.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anybody else, anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hey, see, my name is Josh Jameson. I don't oppose to the idea. I'm just looking more or less clarification on it. So, would that point-two-five be its own property? Or would it still be connected to the existing seven-acre tract that is listed for sale?
He, he's adding it. Go ahead, Ms. Donegan.
That is correct. The point-two-three acres would be combined with, if you look on the screen, with Joan Greiner Scarborough's property. So, it would just be increasing Scarborough's property by point-two-three acres. It's not, the point-two-three acres is, would not be its own property.
Got you. Because, yeah, that was the biggest question, you know. I would have more of a concern if it were to be its own property, and then we allow, you know, quarter-acre lots to be developed on that. Yeah, that was the biggest concern. I was just looking for clarification on. So, he would change the whole property from the current zoning back to AR one? Is that, is there a possibility, you know, six months down the road, a year down the road, to it be zoned back to the industrial for a possibility of a warehouse?
I mean, if there, if that is a possibility, I mean, it will start that process all over.
Right.
But this has no bearing on...
And this is just for the zero-point-two-three acres, too, right? It's not the entire piece.
Okay.
So, it's just the sliver, the skin change.
He's moving those, he moved the corner, and then now he's making it conforming to what it's being added to. Is basically all this is, is just cleaning it up.
Got you, good. Yep, that I'm good with, sir. Cool.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Call for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
No.
Second, Mr. Smith. All is in favor? Motion carried by all. Item six, a public hearing for Yuval Bartel. As agent for Andrea L. Alsbrook, requests a conditional use to allow for an event venue located at eighteen-hundred McCall Road Zone AR one. This is the fourth district. Ms. Donegan?
Yes, so this property is currently known, I believe, the Waters, Waters Estate. It's, it's currently an event venue. It was granted that conditional use in two thousand and eighteen. The applicant, or the owner, is selling the property, and therefore, the conditional use is not transferable with ownership. So, it needs to be reapplied for so that the new owners can continue to operate this property as an events venue. They have very little plan to make any sort of alterations to the property or operations. Staff is recommending approval. And the, one of the conditions would be that it does comply with Section five-point-one, point-two, point-ten, private event, private and public event venues, which includes no events between eleven PM and nine AM, and no amplified music entertainment.
All right, thank you. So, because it couldn't be transferred from owner to owner in a sale, this is necessary?
Correct, that's exactly right.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir?
No, but I was just clarifying Josh Allen for the applicant. That's exactly the intent of us being here. Conditional use cannot be transferred. No changes in operation. If y'all can see, if the aerial's still up, this site has been completely built out as a wedding venue. It is the Waters Estate. They are not canceling anyone's weddings. That was a concern from some of my coworkers, who are be attending weddings there in the near future. But everything will, will remain the same. So, thank y'all.
Josh, can I have a question?
Yes, sir.
So, under your Water Estate Site Layout Reference List, what is, uh, what is the lake house gonna be used for?
I believe the lake house is what they use for the actual ceremony. Wanna, if I can...
It says it will be used to hose the bride and the groom.
Oh, hose, that, sorry, that should be host. My apologies. It's going to be a very unique wedding venue. My apologies for that typo.
Okay, that's supposed to be housed?
House, yes. And I believe what you're referring to, it has makeup chairs and that type of thing for hairstylists.
But that was all about?
My apologies.
Millennial thing.
No, everything will be above board and decent, so.
Do you have any more questions?
No more questions, Mr. Higgins. Chairman, no more questions.
Any further questions from the board? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor? Yes, sir.
My name's Steve Perry. I live at 1780 McCall Road. So, my house faces McCall Road, but the back of my property faces the venue. We built in 2017 and when we built, it was supposed to be a bed and breakfast in that area behind us. They have since turned it into a venue. Long story short is for the safety of us that live out there, we've got a little small community, six, seven homes, some face the road that goes in and two of us face McCall Road.
So, if I can remember, you, you bought one of the lots that were part of this?
Right, I believe it was a hundred acre tract at the first and, and Ms. Alsbrook sold off X amount of lots. We bought that with the understanding that this was a, going to be a bed and breakfast. And I know they applied to be a bed and breakfast and never could get permitted and I think some was, anyway. So, what we're faced with now is we have a venue that, that's behind us or in this community and we keep having to call the police because they're out there at 10 o'clock at night, 10:30 at night, 11 o'clock at night, music's blaring. The police come show up, they turn it down, police leave, 30 minutes later, it's back up. This goes on through the week, this goes on, on weekends. I brought some pictures and I, I don't know if you allow to show pictures, but I, it, pictures would speak volume of what I'm trying to explain here. So, can I give to you?
Yes, sir.
So, when they built the road, the road went off on two sections was going to go to the bed and breakfast. When that failed, they changed the routing of the road that comes 25 feet behind my property line and it circles around and goes to the back. They used concrete waste for the road. Well, as the pictures dictate, we cannot get in our backyard and enjoy a weekend that we're covered in concrete waste. I also have documents explaining concrete waste is silica dust. Silica dust is a carcinogen. It is cancerous to a human being. It gives you lung cancer, kidney cancer. It is terrible. We breathe that starting on Friday if there's an event on Saturday, Sun, Saturday and Sunday, all day. Not only is that road, I call it a racetrack because people fly up and down that road like they on the interstate. I have grandchildren that live next to me and they had to put up a fence to try to keep the kids in, but obviously if they out in the yard because they like playing soccer, they get in the back and play. Our fear is that without knowledge or knowing, they go maybe get a ball, people flying up and down that road, one of our grandchildren will get hit. Plus, our neighbors, we have to pull our cans all the way up to McCall Road because Ms. Alsbrook would not allow us to put post office boxes or anything up front. So, all the mailboxes are allowing down the street. We deal with this and it's like I said, the noise, they don't stop at nine, they don't stop at 10, they don't lower the levels when the police come. And, and the last thing I want to do is, is taking the police off the street because of this, when they should be patrolling, they don't have supervision down there. When they're drinking down there, there's no officers on site. They leaving at midnight, well, all the times of the night, they flying up and down these roads. We watched them almost spin out trying to make that turn. They're right up behind my property. They're, they've almost had a head on. They coming in the end, out the end, in the out. I mean, it's, it's the craziest mess I've ever seen. And, and as I said, if, if it's going on through the week, my kids, kids, grandchildren, they got to go to school. They need to go to bed at a decent time and that music back there is blaring and playing and it, it's just, it's not right what they've done. And we would have hoped that whoever bought this would have kind of met with this little community there and tried to work some of this out, but obviously that didn't take place and they want to continue on doing what they're doing. All we're asking is some consideration for the, for all of us that live out there that for one, we don't die in five years from dust and there's the literature on the dust, if I may.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, it's, it's, I, I don't want to take up all the time without the others that live there, but it's just, we wish that commissioners would look at this and help us out any way you can for the ones that, that, that we live out there, that we have to endure this. I don't, we can't even enjoy our weekends anymore. I mean, it's, 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 it's to the point that it's unbearable. Would you go have to go in the house or you leave? You know, and, and, and I didn't buy and build out there to do this. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Mr. Yellen, we may have let you address concerns a moment.
Chris Marburger, live 1830 McCall Road. I just kind of want to add on to what Mr. Perry said about the traffic, the dust and the noise. There's been few occasions where it is extremely loud from my front porch and this, I don't know if I can show you which property I live on. Not the big one there, not that one, but the middle one right there.
Yes, sir.
So, that's a long way and it's really loud. I've got a video on my cell phone, which is neither here nor there, but my biggest issue is, is that road. That road does not support that much traffic in and out of that venue. It's also the covenants. There's covenants on there. Who owns those covenants after Ms. Alsbrook leaves? Is it the new owners? Do they own the covenants to that point? Because part of the covenants, it's the homeowner's responsibility to maintain that road, that easement. So, if, my main concern is that, is that road, the dust and the traffic in and out of there. And also the, I mean, like, like Mr. Perry said, they're just flying up and down that road all day on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So, that's just my main concern, though.
Do you access your property from that, that easement, that road?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I come right off McCall.
It's crush and run?
Yeah, or, well, I don't even think it's crush and run.
Crushed concrete. Crushed concrete.
But, I mean, it's, it's very poorly ma, I'll tell you that back. It was well maintained a few years ago, still dusty, but at least there wasn't potholes and when it rains, it's a mud bog to get out that easement when it rains a lot. But it's just poorly maintained at this point and it just cannot support the amount of traffic. I mean, they get one venue through there and it puts wear and tear on that, that easement that would take me a year to put on it as a, as a homeowner that supposedly I'm supposed to maintain it. So, I just, just curious about the covenants and, and just that, that access road is, is my main, main issue.
Was the venue there before y'all built the home?
No. It, it was in process, but I, I moved in there, 19, we started building. And for her to come, to, to get it going, you know, she had to sell off some more lots.
All right, sir.
But that's, that's all, just, just that easement is my main concern.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Kaylee Perry. I live, like, my father-in-law was just up here, the first one. We live literally right next to my in-laws. So, the, we're literally all the way up to the road and that's where our complaints, what the noise comes in, because we are all the way to the road and we can still basically be doing the dougie in the living room because we can hear the, the music so loud. We have had to call the cops. It didn't help, but we did. I have pictures of, if I can share.
Will you give them to Ms. Donegan and everything, please?
The pole, the wooden pole is our property line and then obviously the road is, is the road that goes back to the venue. So, the pole is where my children play and the mama bear's coming out just a little bit because they do fly down that road. It, it's ridiculous. And that's, the mama bear complaint comes out. So, I, I don't know if there's like a, like a barrier that can be built, speed bumps. I don't know what the prob, what we can do to fix it, but that's one of my major complaints is the safety of my kids. And then my five-year-old in bed every weekend is asking, Mama, when are they going to turn the music off? So, those are my basic complaints is my babies.
I understand. Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Hey, my name's Larry Belader. I live at 1285 Ralph Ron. Actually, wasn't coming up here for this because I didn't know this was part of it, but I'll just substantiate what they're saying. I live across Race Path. Race Path Road is between me and them and I can go out in my front yard at 10:30 at night and I can hear that music playing quite clearly. So, there's some amplification going on if there's not supposed to be. It's a serious violation, but it is loud. It, it's very loud and it carries very well out there. So, I can only imagine what they're going through being as close as they are to it when I can hear it a half a mile away from where they're at.
Good evening. Carlotta Chandler. I live in 1850. So, when you're going on the white road, on left and I'm facing the event. So, since few months ago, the situation was not that bad for us. We bought a house that we knew was an event, so it was not a big deal. But a few months ago, they used to have a representative there monitoring the situation, checking volume, supervising. And since then, it went away and we start having problem. The volume is very, very high and there's no way to control. I don't know if there's a meter or somebody is checking if they're following. A meter would be enough to, you know, keep an eye on the decibel that are allowed or not allowed. I don't know if you have been out there, but the barn is facing the lake and the sound is facing the water, passing the water and ending up on my front house. So, we, we, we enjoy it until a certain time. So, we really would like that there would be something written very specific on what are the time, what are the level of the sound and there will be somebody there checking constantly what's going on. We're also trying to work on a buffer zone and some help from the other side would be very appreciated. And I don't know if it's something that we can talk about it and, and again, like everybody else, the white road is, is starting to be an issue as well because it's, it's not well maintained and it's very dusty. They have an average of, I, I don't know if it's specified on their request, but they do have like 80 cars coming in and out when there's an event multiple time per day because they have to set up everything. So, it's, it's a very heavy traffic. Not sure that road is prepared to support that. So, I would like you to check on that too as well. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Mr. Yellen, you wish to?
Thank you all. So, this event venue was approved originally in April of 2018 and like I initially stated, we're here on behalf of the potential new owners of the site. And so, I don't want to, well, I do want to distance myself from some of the actions that have occurred on site previously. This is the first that we've heard of any of the problems related with the property. We were not trying to, to come in, obviously running an event venue. Our client doesn't want to have the police called. We don't want to have people's weddings interrupted or cause problems for the neighborhood. We'd obviously be happy to, to meet with the neighbors to see if we can, can work something out, to see if there's any sort of common sense solutions that we can do, whether it's as was suggested, having a, a permanent onsite manager or having a decibel meter reader that can control the sound. But we are, we're still in support of our application, but would like to do what's right and, and, and meet with the neighbors as best we can to work something out.
What about the, the dust from the road? That seems to be a real concern with a lot of people and, and this man handed out, Mr. Perry handed out some literature that showed that that's carcinogenic. Were you aware of that?
I was, I was not aware of that. We've, I've, we've only been involved with the property for, for a few weeks now.
Would your client be willing to address that issue and maybe resurface it or?
I mean, we can, we can discuss that, yes. I'm, I'm, I'm sure everything comes at a cost, but happy, happy to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's solutions that might not even be repaved, right? I mean, there's things that contractors have to do to control dust leaving their site while they're under construction and spraying down entry roads and things of that nature that can minimize that a little bit. Seeing the pictures were definitely eye-opening. I can imagine the frustration there related to the, to the sound. That's the, the conflict of the two, right? I mean, you got a venue, specifically the staff report said conditional with section 5.1, 2, 10. Do you have that where we can, that, that's the section that had the language about the amplified?
Correct.
Is there any standard to the amplification? Is there a decibel level? Would a meter do any good? Is there something that you could measure and hold them accountable to?
I mean, I, I agree with some of the comments. I mean, in that wide open field, Mr. Perry, I'll give you one more second. In that wide open field, water, I mean, it's going to be, you know, nighttime, it's going to be really hard to control the noise. You're going to have to keep it very low. I mean, it's probably going to have to be limited for time, short time, so.
Well, I guess that's why I was bringing it up, just so it was clear to the new, what the standard is as opposed to just having it listed on the?
Right, I know it's in Article 2 of your ordinance, but I don't know what, what decibels listed. Typically, it's around 50 to 60, but I don't want to say for certain.
There is a decibel chart in the ordinance and there's also a, a sound ordinance where after 9:00 PM, the decibels need to drop. Unfortunately, I could not cite that off the top of my head.
I just want to make sure that there's a standard.
I understand.
But yes, there is, absolutely.
I don't disagree with them, though. It gets tough to, you know, have to call the cops every time, you know, and then the cops leave and it turns back up. So, I mean, I, I too can feel the frustration. Anything further from Mr. Yellen?
No.
Mr. Perry, yes, sir, very, very quickly.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry to take up so much time, but this is very important.
No, sir, I, I can tell.
So, we have up to now, we didn't know who to complain to. We hadn't had no idea who the buyers were. We've been complaining to Ms. Alsbrook. I complained repeatedly to Ms. Alsbrook about the dust, about the road. The road wasn't constructed for 200 cars in and out daily. It's not that kind of road. And this concrete waste, I know what they put down, has turned into just?
Powder.
Powder. And it, it is killing us literally. I mean, I, I hope you've seen the pictures, it's terrible. That was not built back there when I built my home in 2017. That was not built. And I'm telling you, had I have known what it was going to turn into, I would not have built. And I'm telling you, had I done known what it was gonna turn into, I would not have built. But it's done now. But something's gotta be done. They don't cut it off at nine. And I'm telling when, I hate to call the police to such a, something like that because as soon as they leave, depending on which way the wind blows, I'm sure y'all know how sound travels. It's gonna be harder, harder to do a, a decibel because this week it could be this. If the wind blows a different direction across that water or that pond back to us, it's gonna be a lot higher. So, you know, we just ask that, that if y'all would please consider some alterations about what's going on back behind us. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is anyone else wish to speak?
I just have a couple of questions. I'm just curious to know, is who approved the road? What the county ordinance is? And is there any way to verify how many times that the police have been called to the venue? So is there any way to verify any of that?
I don't think we have that information tonight, you know, obviously.
I, I would, I would recommend that you would put in an open records request with the county clerk, and that way each one of those things can be addressed.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anything, anyone further?
I'll close public comment. I mean, any discussion from the board?
I feel like we should give them a chance to talk a bit more. I mean, he's heard some comments. Sounds like.
I mean, it's a beautiful place. It's a shame, but I do know, I mean, I've been in there one time, and I can see the concern. I mean.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying I want to stop the business, but I think there's legitimate concerns that maybe we could give them a chance to have a month to see if they can meet, to come up with some solutions. Because again, this is a new business owner bringing their request to us. I feel like if the same questions were asked, I'd probably ask that same thing to give them a chance with the new business.
What about the neighbors behind it, to the right, to the left of that screen? You see that cul-de-sac back in there? Are they having issues with sound, or is there a buffer? I mean, maybe, maybe it does need some sort of.
There's not much buffer. There, I mean, it's gonna be impossible to put a buffer.
There's some pressure to them, but they got the trees. I mean, you can table it. I mean, we can. Turn it down with a bunch, with a long list of items that need to be worked out for county commissioners. I mean, we can do whatever.
I mean, it would seem like the health department would step in and say, that road has to be fixed because of these, this dust that it could possibly spread.
The thing about it, the road is the easiest thing to fix, the dust.
Yeah.
The sound, carrying the sound, I don't know how you fix that.
They know who the new owners are gonna be now. They got a month to discuss it before commissioner meeting. There should be plenty of time for them to figure out something before then, I think. Maybe we can go ahead.
I'm good with that.
All right. Any further discussion? Call for a motion. I'm gonna make a motion to approve, but y'all, y'all know who the new owners, and they seem like they're willing to negotiate. It's gonna go before the county commissioners next month, and maybe y'all can work out something before then. But this, this is just a recommendation to the commissioner so that it, it doesn't have any bearing on, on the actual outcome, so. Have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Motion dies. Call for a new motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to table it for a month, for a discussion and bring it back.
I have a motion to table. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. All's in favor of tabling it?
I guess I'll go with table.
All right. You opposed?
Yeah.
All right. So it's four to one to table it. Mr. Yellen, I mean, suggest you try to meet with everyone and see what you can work out. Is anyone in the overflow room?
I'm sorry?
Is anyone in the overflow room over there?
I did not.
Anybody need a break? No. Anybody need a break?
Some water. Think I need some more water.
Mr. Yellen, I mean, there, we do have an overflow room over there if, if, if anyone wished to step over there with you and give you their, their contact information. Item seven, sketch plan for Daniel Ben Israel as agent for Effingham County Industrial Develop Authority. Request approval of a sketch plan for Parker's Convenience Store, Old River Road, located on Old River Roads on B3. That's the first district.
Ms. Donegan?
I defer to Ms. Concanon.
Ma'am? Oh, Ms. Concanon.
Yeah, I can do this one. This was before you, a few months ago, for rezoning. It was B2, and they rezoned to B3. It's a little more intensive than B2 would normally accommodate, so it's B3 now. The intention is to place a convenience store with diesel pumps, up to four diesel pumps, which is why we asked them to move it to B3. At the Board of Commissioners, the rezoning was approved with the condition that trucks not be permitted to park overnight. That was a specific condition that was added to the conditions that were already in place. And at this time, they are asking for approval of the sketch plan. And so the county engineer has looked at this, and of course, our, our review engineers will, will be looking at it as the site development plans come in and the traffic impact assessment comes in as well. But we are recommending approval. It generally fits with what was shown at the, it's the same as what was shown at the rezoning, so it's the same concept, and it is generally fitting with our requirements. And we'll go through further review through the health department for the septic system and also through our review engineers for general layout and stormwater retention.
Was that the issues that we were having? Was the septic and the overnight parking?
I think the overnight parking was the, the potential for noise, trucks running overnight, was what concerned the neighbor to the north. And so the commissioners added a condition prohibiting overnight truck parking.
Does the site plan confirm, uh, conform with the required buffers now? I see that was a comment from, um, the review comment.
Yeah, that, that kind was just, that was just reiterating, but they are showing thirty-foot buffers, I believe, where they need to. Yeah, on the northern and eastern with the, with the AR1 property.
And there's nothing required, Old River?
You know, there's a ten-foot vegetative strip required on any, on any boundary that, or any frontage that had, any road frontage. So that's what will be on that frontage there. They're showing landscape buffer, ten-foot landscape buffer there.
There was some other, some other problem. Was it, it was some other problem, let me remember.
Wow.
Does anybody recall, was there some other problem besides parking and, uh?
I think you're thinking about a, a, the one that was adjacent to I-16 that we denied.
Yeah, yeah. I thought that it was some problem with this being all wetlands or something. But it doesn't appear to be wetlands from the vegeta, area.
No, I think that one was the one that was next to the subdivision at Old River Road and I-16.
Right, the one that was across.
There was a lot of wetlands. They wanted all the overnight parking. That was, that was, that's not this one.
No, no, I think that was a septic issue, that somebody said there's too much wetlands there and, and then overnight parking, but I thought it was something else. It has to be addressed. An engineer must have addressed all that.
He did.
Yeah, I think we talked about that last time, that, that it was, we were thinking the wetlands were in a different spot than they actually were. But everything looked good.
Is there? I do have a few questions, but I thought if there's somebody who can present it.
Is, is there anyone else to speak on behalf of this?
Hey, good evening. Brian Klausser. I'm a representative for, for Parker's Companies, so.
Good evening.
Good evening. I, I, I mean, I, no additional comment, just to say I'm representative here if there are any questions or.
Is there, open it up to the board for questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, clarify my question about the, I see where it's labeled, but I also see where the paving and the curbing looks like it's going over that dash line that says the ten-foot landscape area. So, and, and I'm not opposed to the use of the project at all, just want to be clear about what the expectation is, is what we're gonna see there, because it's really close to the right-of-way there. There's not gonna be room for really any planting that would be outside of the right-of-way.
This is along Old River?
Yeah, if you step back, you can see the dash right-of-way line along Old River Road there, and then the straight line right is your curb line that's proposed in front of the fuel stations. It just looks like it's within three or four feet of that right-of-way line. And again, I just wanted to clarify that that's what we're.
Yeah, I mean, it does. I'll agree with you that.
Do you see it as a problem?
I just want us to be aware that there will be no opportunity for any landscape adjacent to that roadway and how close it is there. I do have something additional I wanted to ask about, the access points. Those are two additional full movement access points that are proposed.
Yes, sir.
And have y'all done a traffic impact analysis yet?
It's in, uh, in the works right now. They're looking at, or they're getting the traffic, or actual counts out there.
Okay. I just do have a little concern with two full movements on that.
Yeah, you're, good point. I thought that was a right-in, right-out on the far end, but the other one, it was, it's not.
It's supposed to be, I thought.
And I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm first to say that. That's why I ask about the TIA.
Right.
And I just would, won't staff to see that TIA, and I would hope that TIA justifies that that would be a safe condition with two additional full movements on, over the road right there. It's just, it's an area that we all know is growing, it's in its curve, and it's, it's just something that we really need to be.
We said no overnight parking.
So how will you police the overnight parking? See, I see, I do see, looks like parking's places.
I mean, at this point, Parker's has, has planned to put up signage. I mean, there's, there's no overnight parking police that they're gonna, at this, this point that I'm aware of, so.
There don't need to be controls because they overnight park on the side of the shoulder there.
Yeah, I mean, especially right there in that area.
I mean, even if they're, they're not trying to do it, like, Parker's doesn't want it, they're pressured to do it.
Right. Anything further? Any wants, anyone else wish to speak? This is a sketch plan. Any, any further questions? I call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the sketch plan with the condition that the TIA that will be submitted with the full development plans justifies and the accommodation for two additional full movements. And if not, that one of those additional access points, likely the middle one, be restricted to a right-in, right-out only.
I'd have a motion to approve. I hear a second.
I'll second.
Second. All's in favor? Any opposed? I should carry ball. Item eight, the McGrally Company is agent for Charles Layton. Request approval for a pond less than one acre located on McCall Road, Fourth District. Ms. Donegan? Representative for the McGrally Company.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, board and staff. I'm Elick Metzger with EMC Engineering.
Can you tell us about your plan?
Yeah, and I.
Can I interrupt you one second? I'm sorry.
We can talk about both of them.
I'm assuming that the, this one acre is also gonna be in, the way I read it, is in the same parcel as the sixty-five point two-nine?
Correct.
That's correct. So, I mean, obviously, it's two separate motions, but we will discuss both.
Right. I think that, that'll make probably a little bit more sense. So there's, I believe, five tracks that are under contract to be purchased. Three of those tracks are what we're talking about rezoning part of. So it'd be a total of ninety-seven acres, the three tracks in, in entirety. So sixty-five acres would be rezoned to industrial I-1 with a conditional use for surface mine. That, that's the second, the second motion that we're talking about. The first motion, since a, a surface mine takes a while to develop, do the surveying, the design, the permitting through EPD, the owner-operator wanted to get started early, so wanted to get started with a small, less than one acre pond in that same vicinity to go ahead and start doing some, doing some work while the permit would be in place. So what they're asking for is not, is initially a little bit less than a one acre pond, ultimately with the surface mine, and of course, when you hear surface mine, that's just a designation that the state gives. It's basically a borrowed pit, be excavated for dirt, be used in the surrounding areas with all the development going on, the parkway, other roads, other developments. So the actual full surface mine that we have shown is only twenty-three point six acres of that parcel. So it's not gonna be allowed to be used as warehouses, any other industrial use. It's a, it's a, it's a mine to get dirt out of. When it's completed and closed, it's resloped, reclaimed, and it'll be left as a pond. And then usually, it reverts back to the original zoning. So that's, that pretty much explains both of them. If you got any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Ms. Donegan, do you have anything you wish to add?
Mr. Chair, I, I just want to clarify that we are exclusively just talking about the pond less than one acre at this time.
That's great.
Okay, because I, I know that there is interest in the rezoning and different staff comment for that.
Okay.
Where the pond under one acre is concerned, staff is recommending approval. The applicant did submit a required erosion control plan today. It has not had a chance to be fully reviewed, and all the conditions are listed under approval. Again, as already been touched on, just want to point out that the site plan shows the pond inside the surface mine area and that the surface mine, including this parcel, is the next item on the agenda.
Thank you. Can you talk about the access?
Um, the, the access will be on to McCall Road.
Okay. For the one acre?
Yes.
All right. Any questions or comments at this time about the one acre pond? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak about the pond less than one acre? Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Terry. My last name is Bynan. We just moved here in July to one-one-seven Buckfield. So all this is a little new to me. But it's like, he just said, I believe, that they haven't, they're waiting for a permit, but they've already started doing work on the land already. And they were out there this morning, and it was just, I could hear all time, all the time, when I was out there walking in my neighborhood.
Seven AM.
I'm, I'm, I mean, so I, I'm not sure what kind of work they're doing, but obviously, this is agricultural land. I mean.
It's big equipment. You can hear it. It's bulldozers and. I just didn't know if that was the norm for that kind of thing or not, to go in and start doing stuff like that without a permit or not.
I mean, I, I'll get, we'll let Mr. Metzger, the engineer, address what they can and can't do by law.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bynan. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the one acre pond at this time?
My name is Keith Albert. I live at three oh-two Buckfield Lane. I'm gonna be a hundred percent honest. I travel that road every day to go to and from work. The amount of traffic on it now is about enough. Some days, I spend an hour and forty-five minutes. The amount of traffic on it now is about enough. Some days, I spend an hour and forty-five minutes trying to get to work. When we add this, it's gonna make it even longer. And that's just not logical. I'm sorry. It's not. When we have an accident going out of the county, some of us are three and four hours late getting to work because there's only so many ways out now. We don't need this added traffic to stop us from getting to where we need to be to make a living. Also, I have a seventeen-year-old daughter who travels this road every day. I don't want to put her in a position of possibly getting into an accident and getting hurt because of this going on. And I'll, I'll be honest, I've got that same issue with the other three things coming down the pipe for what they're wanting to do out here. I built here seventeen years ago, and I built here because it was a small city. It was quiet. I didn't have to worry about anything. Now I have a truck. I have Love's Truck Stop less than two miles from my house, and I have added traffic for that every day. I have people coming through my subdivision now that I do not know, have never seen, and have never had that prior to some of the changes going on in this county. So I have big issues with what's going on here. And I don't think it should get approved just because of the fact that you are putting additional people who live in this county at risk of getting hurt, at risk of possibly losing their job if they can't get to work on time. I mean, I'm sorry. We moved up here because this was Effingham, and it was a quiet town. I come from Bloomingdale, so believe me, I know what it's like. And the stuff y'all are doing now is not the stuff we moved here for. And it's, I understand, we've got to grow, but the amount of growth we're having now with stuff is ridiculous. And like I said, I travel that road every day for work, to and from home. And it's bad enough now as it is without adding dump trucks and all the other stuff coming in.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the one acre pond?
Good evening. My name is Randy Ward, and I live at three oh-eight Buckfield Lane. And they're right, there's something going on back there. Because my property, I'm in a cul-de-sac, and my property back, my property is right less than a mile from this place. And on October twelfth, they're what, you know, I know what agriculture machinery is. It sounds like a conveyor of some type dumping big rocks into dump trucks. It was my understanding, they can't do this unless they get the proper permits. But it started October twelfth. October thirteenth, I went back there because it was still going on. This morning, seven o'clock, it's still going on. I've never, I've never heard it before. Okay? I too, I used to live in Georgetown, south side of Savannah. But I, I do suffer from PTSD, so I moved out here to Rinkin, where it was nice, quiet, nice neighborhood, great. All right? Now all of a sudden, we got this. Now, and I'm assuming we're gonna have more dump trucks on the road? Okay? I've counted how many school buses go up Ralph Ron and go down McCall. Now we're gonna ask these bus drivers to intermingle with these dump trucks now? I don't want this. And if, if this is what we have to look forward to, then and, and getting dirt, for what? Let them go out into more rural areas and do that.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you, gentlemen.
My name is Rob Edgar. I live off of Ralph Ron in McCall area. And my friends and I, we ride motorcycles. We actually had a friend wreck her motorcycle. She's a new rider. She hit a little dirt pile and slid her motorcycle in the road, so not only do we share the same concerns of the traffic and the large vehicle traffic, but we're not in favor of this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Edgar.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the pond less than one acre?
My name's Samuel Forte. I live at three hundred Buckfield Lane. There's an existing pond on the property. What's the other pond gonna be for?
Pardon?
There is an existing pond that's there. What do they need another pond for?
I'm assuming the landowner just wished to sell this property for dirt?
He wants to fill the existing pond?
I don't believe, no, sir. No, sir. I mean, it's gonna be dug, it's gonna be mined, and you're asking why the one acre? Why this, why there's two separate-
What is another pond for? He already has an existing pond. This question pertains to pond. I have a thousand for the next one.
I can't answer why the landowner wants another pond.
Should we find that out before we approve it? There's another pond on the wetlands too, isn't there? Half of it's in the wetlands. It's a small pond. And then a big pond where he's doing his work at.
Well, I'll, I'll, we'll try to get that question answered about the small pond.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the pond less than one acre? Mr. Metzger?
So there is a existing pond on site. They would like to dig another pond and sell the dirt from it, and that's, that's the purpose of it.
So the existing pond will not be filled?
No, not that I know of. So the pond is a temporary use. Increase in truck traffic is only temporary, and then you're left with the pond. The work going on, according to the people that are doing it, is the property was neglected. It had a bunch of trash, a bunch of concrete pipes, and all of that's being cleaned up. So what we're talking about here tonight is construction of a pond, and it has nothing to do with what they were doing with the property. And I, and I don't know if this truth to it or not, but, you know, we've also heard that McCall is probably gonna be a designated truck route, depending on how it ties in with Blue Jay and the new Parkway. So what we always talk about and what we always hear about is we want surface mines as close to their uses as possible. We don't want to go to Clio and haul dirt down through communities to get to jobs in South Effingham. So that's what our client is doing, is trying to locate surface mines in close proximity to where the dirt's gonna be used, haul it, and then it's, it'll go back, revert to a pond and revert back to the original zoning once complete. We're not talking about having a warehouse, other subdivision. We're talking about a, a being, being left with a pond on site.
Thank you, Mr. Metzger. The one acre pond will be very temporary, obviously. Wish to comment from the board this time?
I've got a comment. It probably won't be very popular.
I'll sit up and speak into the microphone.
Okay. But the ones of you who moved up here in a subdivision, at some point in time, it was woodland just like this is. The owner's gonna use it for something. He can use it for a dirt pit, and it'll be temporary. If he builds a subdivision there, he puts four hundred, three hundred houses in it, that's a thousand cars every day for the rest of your life versus a year or two on a dirt pit. Just food for thought.
So, I mean, I will, that was the one comment I wish to make. I mean, I did, I did speak to County Commissioner, and yes, McCall, as Mr. Metzger commented, is on the, I believe, the, I don't know, Teresa, if you're aware, it's on the upcoming list to be upgraded. At the completion of the Parkway, then McCall will be then upgraded, widened, resurfaced. So McCall's gone. Do we have any hours of operation, Ms. Metzger?
It's, it's stated in the, in the zoning ordinance. I don't know it right off the top of my head, but it's normal business hours is during daylight, so I'm not sure exactly. But-
I mean, and obviously, you know, it's-
But it, but it's in, it's in the ordinance.
You know, restrictions can be put on it as well. Anyway, thank you. We've heard the public comment on this item. Is there anything further, questions, comments from the board at this time? I call for a motion. Make a motion to approve with staff. Motion for approval with staff.
Second.
Second. All's in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all.
That's the pond.
That, that was the pond less than one acre. It's eight o'clock. I need to take a short recess, please. Road, this is the fourth district. Ms. Donegan?
Yes. The applicant is seeking to put in a surface mine on this parcel and to address the comment from earlier, I believe, and I can verify this, but I believe that working hours are limited by ordinance, seven AM to nine PM. The, the proposed surface mine is shows access onto McCall Road. It's located in between McCall Road and Race Path Road. Neither of which are currently designated truck routes. The proposed site does have some extensive wetlands coverage. You can see here marked in green. That is reflected on their concept plan. We have received as staff an outpouring of concern from local residents who are against this mine for a variety of reasons, and you, you have their concerns noted in your packets. Also, we'll note that they're, having been approved for a pond less than one acre, the pond that they're proposed is going to be located within the surface mine. Future land use shows this entire area as agricultural. And for that, these reasons, staff is recommending denial.
Thank you, Ms. Donegan. Is there anyone that wishes to speak for the McGrally Company? Not for, probably not for the McGrally Company. Mr. Metzger?
Elick Metzger with EMC Engineering. So like, like we discussed before, so this is not the entire track being rezoned. It's only a portion of it. Only a portion of the piece that's being rezoned to I-one is able to be used as surface mine. So we're not proposing to impact any wetlands. We're, we'll have the appropriate buffers off of the wetlands. If you look at our map, we're showing a fifty-foot buffer off of wetlands. To, to the bottom of the page, that, that portion of, of one of those tracks is gonna remain AR-one, so it'll be at least three hundred and fifty feet So, it'll be at least 350 feet from that bottom property line up to where the pond would start. On the north side, there's a creek and a wetland buffer up on that side also. So, we're not, not proposing any wetland, wetland impacts. And the actual pond would be somewhere around 23 to 25 acres. What, what was one of your other conditions?
23 to 25 acres.
That the road, that McCall was an estate road.
It's not currently, it's not currently designated truck route.
Yeah, it was one of the other ones.
Not designated truck route.
Wetlands coverage, neighbor concern, and land use.
Oh, the land use, okay. So, I don't know really why the county has ponds and, and stuff where you have to rezone to industrial. That's not how it's always been in the county. So, it's something that's come about in the, in the last 10 or 15 years. So, now it has to be...
We were told the state required it.
Hmm, I don't, I'm not sure about that.
I was told that.
But anyway, it just has to fit into the land use ordinance of the county. And so, that's where the county felt it fit in best, which it doesn't really fit in that well, I don't believe. So, we're, we're forced to be an industrial use with a conditional use that allows the surface mine and then revert back to agricultural, residential. So, I, I believe it does comply with the future land use once it's completed. But yeah, you, you were correct. We're, because of the, the wetland areas on these tracks, you know, you're only talking about, we're, we're trying to rezone 65 acres. The pond's only going to be, you know, 25 acres.
Can you put that wetland map back up there, please? Thank you. The other one, the, the sketch, I guess. Yeah.
So, this, this is the piece that we're rezoning. This is the pond. And then you can see how much wetland or potential wetland there is.
So, where's the remainder? There's 30 acres that are not...
Oh, so there's a big tract here. Oh, that's remaining AR-1. So, that's what I was saying. There's, there's a buffer of 350 feet or so from that way. And then you're going to have a large natural buffer on the top also.
Could you also show on the other side what you just showed us?
So, this tract, this tract, and this tract, portion of it is going to be rezoned for the pond. You can see the pond. Is this dark, dark line. This portion, portion of the property here is not going to be rezoned. It's staying AR-1. And then that creates, you know, a separation of at least probably 350 feet from the pond to this property line. And then up north, or on the top side of the page, you've got a creek and a wetland area up there that creates a, a buffer on that side. So, we're also complying with the state's buffers of, of at least 50 feet around the, no, around the wetlands and around the surface mine.
Questions this time? So, just to be clear, it's 97.36 acres, but we're rezoning 65.29. But the actual pond size will only be approximately 23 acres.
It, it's going to be somewhere much less than the, than the total, yeah.
Approximately 23 acres. And traffic will only go out on McCall Road?
Uh, that's, that's the plan. I mean, I mean, it's no reason, it's, it's no reason to access a road this small to go around to your main road. That just doesn't make sense. So, they're, they're going to pick the most direct route that's on the plan. And when it's permitted by the state, they look at the access point. That's part of the mine. It has to be, has to have a sign with the mine number and name on it. Also, has to have an entrance way constructed to the county standards. It's paved with a pipe. And then that gives a way to control dirt being tracked out onto the highway.
Do they have a timeline on the 23 acres that they're doing with the park pit once they get started?
Um, I don't know. They may want to talk about that.
It's really depending on how this goes. I mean, we can't hardly fill that out.
I'm sorry. We're, we're taping these meetings, so we can't talk from the back. But basically, if I understand what you're saying is, I mean, you can't put a concrete timeline because business is business and...
Mr. Chairman?
I mean, obviously, you hope it digs out fast. Right? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to touch on, on two things. One is to clarify that the ordinance states that excavation activity involving the movement of soil off-site must be located in industrial zoning district. And that is the reason surface mine must be rezoned industrial. I also wanted to just go back and address some of the comments I was hearing earlier. We have received calls that there is activity happening onsite already to include dump trucks and use of large machinery. Code enforcement has been out now twice, as well as planning and zoning has made a trip out there. We have not been able to find any evidence of this happening. However, it is an open code enforcement investigation at this time.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. You have anything further, Mr. Metzger?
Well, like I mentioned earlier, they're cleaning up the property and doing some stuff on it. It was a bunch of pipes. It was hundreds and hundreds of concrete pipes that were left on site. I, I don't really know where they came from or why they were there. So, they're doing that, doing some underbrushing. So, that doesn't have anything to do with the surface mine operation that we're talking about improving. This is property that anybody, you can do work on your property to improve it and clean it up.
Thank you, Mr. Metzger. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request?
So, my biggest concern with this, this mine is I'm in the little house, the little two acres directly behind this thing. Concerns that I have are what is the surface mine going to do to my drinking? Is this going to interfere with my wells? Is it going to dry up? I mean, if that's the case...
You have a deep well?
I mean, I don't know exactly how deep it is, but I'm pretty sure it's deep.
Yeah, well, I mean, Mr. Metzger can explain, but it's, I mean, you're talking about surface water and water down in an aquifer.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, my biggest concern was that. Okay. For number two, what was they going to do with it afterwards? He said they're going to build a pond out of it. Is there something going to bind that? I mean, they're not going to go back there and put a trash pit back there, are they?
I mean, so a surface mine by state regulations, as Mr. Metzger stated, once it's completed, I mean, the state monitors, and that's, that's, that's what's good about these ponds over an acre is they're monitored by the state. I mean, the runoff, the water quality, everything. And then they're, they're also monitored. They come back in, they slope them so that it's not, you know, a straight down shelf. They're graded slopes. So, if someone was to fall in, they can get back out and cleaned up. And, I mean, they're just Baker's Pond. I mean, right up around here.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm...
I mean, that's, that's an example of a, of a surface mine.
My other issue was, could you show me again where you were talking about they're going to, the trucks are going to come in and out of?
So, on that screen right up there now.
Exactly. Right there. Okay. So, you're not going to use the existing, this right here on the edge of my property, right?
Not for the surface mine, they say.
Okay. So, all, all dump trucks and stuff won't be coming out of here. They'll be coming out down here. Okay. All right. That was another concern of mine, because that's right next door to me. So, other than that, I think...
I mean, we, we understand your concerns. I mean, we do.
Yeah, and I just didn't want all this in my backyard. But hey, that's better than a subdivision.
10 degree.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Excuse me, sir. Could you state your name, please, for the record?
I'm sorry. Robert Mackey.
Did you sign?
Yep.
Were you? Thank you.
I'm in for it.
Thank you. Mr. Mackey. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello. My name's Charlie Haislip, and my property butts up on the corner of this atrocity. And as for like noise, there's always like a big track hole out there. And it, it's just rattling my house all day. It's just bang, bang, bang. And my house is actually rattling from this. And that's just, you're saying, cleaning up the property. I can't imagine just a bunch of other big pieces of equipment out there just making racket all day long. You know, and then my other concern is like, you're saying it's a, it's going to be a pond or an acre pond or whatever it is. Like, how deep is this going to go? You know, and who's, what, what are the insurances that we're going to have that is not going to contaminate our wells? Because I'm on well water out there. You know, and if it does, then what happens then? You know, let's say that something does happen. Are you responsible for that?
Sir, Mr. Haislip, I mean, we addressed the board, please. So, I mean, obviously, it's, this is, like I said earlier, it's one good thing. It's monitored by state. I mean, they, obviously, they monitor water, water runoff. I mean, you know, they, they...
Okay. So, if, if there's something does happen and my well goes bad, who, what do I do then? Who do I go to? Do I come to you? Do I come to this guy? Do I come to the people digging it? What do I do for water if that happens?
I mean, we're an engineer, I mean...
Were you on a deep well?
I don't know. I don't really know. I, I bought the house used. So, but it is a well. And I'm, like I said, I'm butted right on the corner. I'm at 551 Race Path, right there. And like I said, Friday, when I got home from work, it, it just sounded like just explosions were going on over there. You know, just the amount of noise that was coming on. You know, and then, you know, you're not even given a definite timeline of what's going on with this. You're saying a year or two? You know, if you did build a subdivision, at least you'd have to do infrastructure, you know, to fix all that prior. So, I'm just saying, I'm opposed to this, you know, for the welfare, you know, we moved out there for the peace and quiet. And if we got to do a year or two of trucks banging and hi-hos and all that, making all this racket? All right, that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Haislip.
I wasn't going to talk, but here I am. Bernadette O'Connor. I live on the corner of Ralph Ron and Pleasant Hill Road. We moved two years ago to the AR, A for agriculture, R for residential, okay? We moved from right behind Walmart in that lovely lost plantation development because it just got out of control. So, we are now in a lovely seven tenths of an acre. I can't imagine my whole property, I, I mean, when you guys are talking about an acre pond, that would be our entire plus more of property for a pond. This is absolutely absurd. You are trying to put, you're trying to put a mine in the middle of houses. I'm sorry. What everybody has said, we passed buses today going down the dirt road, which is where Ralph Ron goes, turns into a dirt road. We saw buses going down that. There's buses all the time with the kids. This is insane. I was a nurse. I worked at Memorial. I hit that traffic going to work every frigging day. Excuse me, but every day. Going to work. I work three days a week. Thank goodness, it was only three days a week. But I hit that traffic down 21. And like everybody says, there's an accident on 21, where does everybody go? They got in McCall. Where does everybody go? You can't go to Augusta because that comes back onto 21. There is nowhere for people to go. And that is causes more accidents because now people know, I'm in a hurry to get to work. I can't, I can't be sitting in this. So, people are reckless. They are crazy. And it's getting worse because when I was, when I was, now, thank goodness, I'm retired. But when I was going to work, it started at 10 to 7. Now, it's, it's, we were going to the airport two weeks ago at quarter to 6:00 in the morning. That traffic was bumper to bumper. We didn't even know if we were going to make our plane. That's insane to even think that you are going to possibly allow something like this to happen in that residential area. And, and the other thing is, 9:00 o'clock at night? We have to deal with this till 9:00 o'clock at night? This is absurd. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor.
Sorry, it's me again, but I probably don't need to introduce myself. But, so as I said, I live on 1780 McCall Road.
You do have to introduce yourself.
Steve Perry. Ralph Ron comes out. I'm the last house in Rankin, then Ralph Ron, then Springfield. And then you have Ron Station. And all this is kind of taking place right in that area. Down to the left, going towards Springfield, Harco already has a pit down there. And they have destroyed McCall Road hauling dump trucks, dirt. I get it. You, you can't make dirt so people buy it. I understand that process. But the problem is, about six, seven months ago on McCall, they went down each side and put these rumble things. And, and between the venue behind me and the music, and now McCall Road with these dump trucks going up there hitting them rumble strips, oh my God. It is no peace. I guess I've got the fault myself. We built up there in 2017. Me and my wife's dream home. Had plans drawn up about 20 some odd years ago. Wasn't able to do it at the time because of the pocketbook. But we fought scratch, dug, toothed, and nailed. And by God, 27, 2017, we was able to do it. We built our dream home, and it has turned into a disaster. It's no fault of yours, and I, I mean none of this towards you. I understand development. We all understand development. But running these dump trucks up and down the McCall Road, and now you're talking about opening it up for semi trucks. I mean, there's got to be some consideration taken to the people that do live out there, that have built, that have built their dream homes. I mean, it's getting to the point that, that, you know, I'm, I've got in the back of my mind, if we can't fix the back of us, and now we got the front of us, is it just time to do something else? So, please, please, take into consideration of all the people that are sitting in this room. All of us that wasn't able to come that live in that area of, of what we're dealing with. So, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Perry, I just want to echo and ask, I mean, to Mr. Zipper's comment earlier, I mean, once this is done, and, and it will be some pain and suffering, but once this is done, it'll be done. And there won't be 50 or 75 homes there to put traffic on the road all day, every day. I mean, you know, I, we can't, you know, it's hard to tell somebody they can't do anything with their property.
I get it. I, I, I get it.
And it's a very tough decision.
I get it. The, the problem is, where I live, I've already had, in the five years we've been there, we've had two, three vehicles wind up in the ditch in the front of my house. It's because, you know, the, the way it's developed, you know, they've built down at the end of McCall before you get to 21. They've built kind of across. Down on the other end of McCall, when you get, they developing that now. It's just, it's, and they doing what I did. You know, people have dream homes. They trying to get a piece of property and build a home. I get it. I, I totally understand what you're saying. I totally understand.
And you have a beautiful place. And I mean, I, I hope you get, enjoy it.
Does it take away the pain of what we're dealing with? So, we just ask, I, I can't speak for the rest of the people in here. I just ask that just please take into consideration that the ones that do live out there, what we're dealing with. And, and that's a lot of dump trucks going to be on McCall Road and school buses and, and all. And this, it's just, you know, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
My name's Stephen Gatewood. And I live off of Ron Station for the past, my family's lived on Ron Station for over 30 years. And I'd like some clarification to follow up on Mr. Perry was saying. Where the truck routes are going. Someone mentioned earlier about widening McCall, making it a truck route. I'm afraid that's going to happen around station. We allow this. We allow this because the dump trucks and the semis are already traveling down Ron Station, even though it's listed at both ends, not a truck route. When they built that Loves Gas Station, it opened it up to a whole new set of problems. And I was there when Ron Station was paved 30 years ago. It hasn't been paved after that. It's still the original pavement. It can't handle it. McCall Road can't handle it. Because I remember when McCall was still dirt, and you threw gravel down, and then several layers of pavement. There has to be something done about in and out, some sort of regulation. I'm far enough away from this property, I'm not gonna have to look at and deal with these people are having to deal with. I'm thankful for that. But the traffic and the infrastructure and the roads cannot take it. And there needs to be some sort of forethought before we allow 80,000 pound trucks to come in and out of this pit all hours of the day. We're gonna have increased accidents, we're having increased problems on the roads with them deteriorating and falling apart. And I need, I want some sort of consideration done before that happens. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Gatewood. Katie, is it anything in the rigs about routes the trucks have to take?
So there isn't a designated truck route particularly close to that, but any trucks that are on non-designated truck routes, I mean, they can be on those if they're traveling to their home, if they're traveling to, for business purposes. So, any road is available for truck traffic if they're, if they're for regular business, but not as a cut through? That's what the whole ordinance was designed to prevent.
So basically what she said, I mean, if she, if they're, the trucks are making a delivery, you know, they can be on an alternative county road, is that correct?
They shouldn't be cutting through...
They shouldn't be cutting through, that's right, they should be going on 21.
Or unpaved roads.
Here's another thing that just popped in my head. The Career Academy, that's right down there, right beside the State Patrol barracks on 21. Do y'all realize how many students travel up and down Ron Station Road every day? You throw these extra trucks in there, coming in and out of this borrow pit, I'm telling you right now, somebody's gonna end up either dead or seriously injured. And it's gonna happen repeatedly. We're already having trouble at the other end of Ron Station with trucks running the red light, not even paying attention, just coming out of that truck stop because they think everybody that turns down Ron Station has to be going to the Loves', and they're I'm just waiting for that to happen as well. I work on gas stations, I go to gas stations every day. I see truck drivers every day. They're not watching for cars because we're supposed to watch for them. And it is a two-way street. You are supposed to watch where you're going and watch what's coming at you. But with the, with the added traffic of the Loves already and the trucks coming in, because they're not just going up and down that road for delivery or to go home or whatever else she mentioned. They're passing through. They're following the GPS and they're passing through. So, thank you.
Hi, my name's Melissa Casper. I live on Race Path Road. I live in what most of these people would remember as Doc and Mimi Ron's old house. It's the old house on the corner. And I can tell you that over and over again, I have seen tractor trailers, and I live on a curve, go past my house. Dump trucks go past my house. I've even taken pictures with my phone out my kitchen window. And nobody, everybody says, I don't know why they're down there. I've heard noise coming from down the other end of the road where they're proposing to have all of this. And like I said, it's so quiet down there, you know, I can hear my neighbor's kids, you know, half a mile down the road playing outside. Not gonna be able to do that anymore. And this, are they gonna be allowed to do this on the weekends? Is this gonna be a Saturday and Sunday operation as well?
I mean, we can put limits of operations on it. I don't know what the code says.
And I was told, all right, it'd be temporary. How long is temporary? How long is temporary? That's a relative term. Temporary could, to me, could be in a week. Temporary to you could be 10 years. There's, you know, a lot of gray area in there.
Sure, agreed.
And I'm also concerned about the water, the dust, the traffic. And I could just imagine what the Rons would be thinking right now if they were still alive in here. I'm sure they wouldn't want this to happen. It used to be a pig farm, for God's sake, a pig farm with a one-room schoolhouse. Y'all need to think about the heritage of this area. It wasn't meant to be this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for letting me speak. My name's Kenya Baker. I live on Oakview Road and Ron Station. I've been out here for 30 years. I was a Savannah transplant, and I have had the fortune of raising my children and in the school systems here. My children are both disabled, and we have been able to save enough money to put a mobile home on our property and sell our children into their own home. And it is right there on the corner of Oakview and Ron Station. Since Loves has opened, the noise is ridiculous. Like the other lady, the trucks on there are, we've taken pictures of them. I did call and speak with somebody at Ural's office, her name was Laura, I did not get her last name, she was extremely helpful. She had somebody named Eric who went out and looked at the signage and said it was not appropriate, it was not doing the job that it should do. So they have ordered new signage. I did wanna pass that along to other people. So there are some things that they are trying to do to help us. But with the dump trucks, it has become a Race Path 55. Those people fly down there 65, 70 miles an hour, the amount of noise. This has, I moved out here 30 years ago for the same reasons that everybody else did, because it was a nice, quiet community. And now, I too worked at Memorial and have commuted for 32 years, 31 years. And we have to leave home two and a half hours to get to work on time already. We know that there's gonna be growing pains, and we expected growing pains. We know that our community cannot stay stagnant. But what we don't, we did not anticipate is the impact that it would have on our residential areas, and that we don't have the infrastructure that we need to get between counties, and the majority of this, of this county commutes. So we're just asking for some consideration. We know that things have to change. We know that people have different ideas about their property, and we have to be respectful of that, I understand that. But we deserve a little bit of respect, too. We have paid into this county for a long time. This, this is my retirement plan. This is where I wanted to retire. This is where I wanted to stay. But, and I don't have the luxury of just moving away. I have, I have children with additional needs that I don't have the luxury of just moving out of the county. So, just the residential areas, we have to give extra consideration to. And I'm just wanting to be a spokesperson for people that can't be here. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else with anything new to add?
Sir, I'd like to address the two on chief. You say, can you bring that plaque back up with you? You say, all this, no work being done. You cleared out the whole path, you right away. You cleared it all out. You brought dump trucks in there, you have gravel sitting in there.
Um, sir, sir, could I get you to come to the microphone, please? Thank you. So, did you have a question or a comment? I mean, do you want to...
Well, I'm asking him, he said that there's no work being done there, they're just cleaning the area up.
I believe, I believe he said they were cleaning the area up, and you'd also ran around some of the perimeter, is that correct? Property lines?
There's a bunch of material that's just being stockpiled, and everything's being underbrushed. There's nothing that's, there's no mining going on.
Isn't that your, no, there's no mining, but you're prepping the site now? You prepped it since, like Mr. Ward, since, since the 12th of October.
But, but, I mean, they're doing, what they're doing is legal to be done on a piece of agricultural property.
They're prepping their site for the mine, is what they're doing. They're not clearing the brushout.
It's no different from anybody cutting their grass. I mean, we're just cutting grass, cutting grass and stockpiling.
I mean, the state, the state still has to, I, I, sir, 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 I, we'll, we'll have to address it up here. I mean, all these meetings are being recorded, so, I mean, this, I can get Mr. Metzger back up here to explain the way the state mining permit is handled, I mean, what takes place, what has to happen for this to be approved. So, I mean, and they will be on site? So, I mean, if something's been done illegally, I mean, correct?
The, the noise that we're hearing is the trackhoe running. What's the dirt that you're digging, where are you putting it? You're putting around the existing pond. I saw it there this morning. I saw it last week.
Sir, uh, sir, I mean, I, obviously, Ms. Donigan says code enforcement's been out there, um, there's an open investigation, um, you know, if you have any further, I guess, concerns or comments, I mean, if you'll address it through their office tomorrow. But tonight, I mean, we're talking about the rezoning.
Okay, well, I thought that was...
And then if, well, if any illegal activity's going on, that's for code enforcement to, to have to handle.
Okay, and question is, with all the dust that's gonna be, what's gonna happen about that?
Um, well, I mean, the, the road will be watered. The only dust...
I'm not talking about the road, I'm talking about when we're digging. I've worked around mining most of my life.
Yeah, but this is, uh, this is, I mean, this, they'll be digging, they're gonna be digging wet dirt.
Exactly.
I mean, I mean, it's coming out the ground, it's gonna have moisture in it. The, the only dust, place the dust will be is on where the dump trucks are running back and forth. And, and they have to keep those, I mean, it's in their best interest to keep those watered.
All right, we have one, one mine down the other end of McCall, and we're gonna have another one halfway up, if you approve it.
Yes, sir. Is there any additional information?
Yes, sir. Um, yes, my name's Kenneth Finney. My wife was up earlier. I live at 117 Buckfield Drive in Buckfield Plantation. We've just recently moved to that subdivision. I feel for the long-term residents in this area because I can understand what they love about living around here. If you drive down, which I'm sure a lot of people around here have, drove down Highway 17 by that, um, open pit mine where dirt's being brought out, um, the road is basically a dirt road on top of asphalt. Is that what the road's gonna wind up looking like? Like, previous people have stated, the, the roads aren't gonna be able to handle all the traffic from the trucks. And the other gentleman stated that they're labeled for not being heavy trucks now, but they are going through there. Because I followed a cement truck, he just stopped at Loves and he went on down Highway 21. So that's, you know, he's just passing through. I moved, we moved here, my wife and I, and we love the environment in Buckfield Plantation because it's quiet. 7:30 this morning, that, that was over with. 8:30, I clearly heard heavy equipment running. So I went around there to see, and I was on Race Path, and I saw a backhoe running. And, um, so that noise is just a small portion of what's gonna happen when that would open up to full business. I can imagine that the noise level's gonna be even worse, and if I can hear it from Buckfield Plantation, I feel sorry for the people that live right next to it, especially the, the gentleman that is now sandwiched between that and the venue. That's a nightmare. I'd rather have, go out in my backyard at 8:30 at night and not expect to have to listen to that kind of noise. I'd rather hear the owls in the woods. You know, I should have that opportunity and not be subject to, well, you just gotta put up with it, that you gotta listen to it. That's very unacceptable to have that kind of an attitude towards homeowners and residents that live in this area. You just gotta live with it. So, I'm requesting, even though I haven't lived here very long, I'm requesting that y'all deny it. Because this is going down a slippery slope, you're wanting to rezone to commercial or industrial. That's a slippery slope. Once you do it, there's no turning back. Even though you say it'll resort back to a residential zoning, that's a slippery slope for a lot of people that have put a lot of their life into this area. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Finney. Anyone with anything additional? Yes, sir.
I have one other thing to say. You made the comment that you can't tell somebody...
Sir, could you, I'm sorry.
You can't tell somebody not to do anything with their property, but are you gonna allow them to do something that negatively impacts everybody around that property?
That is exactly, Bernadette, again, is this the last time you'll hear from me? That is exactly what I wanted to say. You can't tell somebody to do with your property, you're gonna possibly potentially rezone it and affect everybody else that's around it? That is totally wrong. It is totally wrong. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor.
I live on Pleasant Hill Road and Ralph Ron. Katie mentioned that there was an open investigation into the noise that's been going on. What does that, what impact, if any, does that have on your approval for this project tonight? None? Why?
This is a recommendation to the county commissioners. I'm, I'm sure that will be cleared up by the time it gets to the county commissioners. I mean, did, whether we voted this up or down, it's merely a recommendation county commissioners will choose to do, I mean, they...
So the next meeting on November 1st is where the commissioners approve this or deny it? And that's an open meeting? We can all be there?
It's a public hearing. Every reading, every zoning change has to have three readings, public readings, to, to be changed by law. So there'll be two more, which will be at the county commissioners' meeting.
And will the public have the opportunity to speak?
Yes, sir. It'd be exactly just like this meeting, except we're, we're appointed members and they're elected officials.
Okay.
So we recommend. We recommend.
We recommend, okay. So, when they vote, is that a closed vote or an open vote?
That should be right here.
Right here.
Same as this one.
So we'll know what every one of them vote?
Yes, sir. Be just exactly like this meeting.
So that when it comes time for them to be voted back in, we can take care of that?
Yeah, that's up to you. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
In the defense of the people who are trying to get this done, perception is 99% of everything, and right now to everybody who lives over there, it looks like they've started ahead of time. Again, I'm not saying they have or haven't, but everybody should be able to understand perception, or how it looks. I mean, I've lived here 15 years, never heard anything going on over there. Now, this comes up to get taken care of and possibly be changed, and now all of a sudden they're deciding to clean the land. So, perception is part of it. And I mean, I'm not, not saying they are not doing anything wrong, but that's how it looks to us, the people who live around there. Secondly, all this growth that everybody's doing that's leaning towards industrial, what's that gonna do to our house property when we try to sell it a few years from now? Because nobody's gonna wanna buy Bobby's house when it sits on a four-lane highway, he's stuck there. Nobody's gonna wanna buy my house in Buckfield Plantation because they can't get out, can't get out to go to work. Or they have to sit behind trucks, or they have to fight to get out onto the road, a four-lane road, because somebody wanted to grow the company, or, excuse me, country, excuse me, the county, and make a little money, and it doesn't matter what happens to anybody else who lives here. They're the ones getting the money. They're the ones making the millions of dollars to put in their pocket and be happy. Here I am, working a 40-hour week, putting my kid through college and support my household that if I decide five years from now I wanna sell my house, I may not be able to. I might be stuck here. Because everybody decides to do something to make a little money. Don't get me wrong, everybody wants money. But when you make money, you should also consider what it does to other people in the area. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't sign in last time. Larry Beliter, I'm not gonna rehash everything that they said. I live on 12...
Sorry, I didn't sign in last time. Larry Beliter, I'm not gonna rehash everything that they said. I live on twelve-eight-five Ralph Ron Road. But I will say, or ask, I should say, if you guys decide to recommend this, um, I know he said his intention is not to use Race Path Road, but we all know what the road to hell's paved with. And it's good intentions that I would appreciate if that would be put in there because Race Path can't handle it. You already have, um, dedicated lawn services down on the other end of Race Path Road that took his tra, his tractor and gravel and came and fixed the bridge of, right by seven-hundred, right, uh, Race Path, right by where they're talking about doing this because it was in such bad shape. And I would also say that, um, your basey signs is at seven-hundred Race Path Road. Before he had his house there, he put a building up and he was going to, uh, apply for a business. And he was told that we don't spot zone here, and they turned him down. And he couldn't get his business license approved until he jumped through a thousand hoops and finally wound up building a house there. And all of a sudden now, spot zoning seems to be okay. So, thank you.
I think that is a very valid point, though, about the Race Path condition in there. Stipulation. I agree with him on that.
Yes, sir.
Russell White, I live at three-seventy-one Race Path, or I have property there. Um, and that's my concern is Race Path. The road cannot take that kind of traffic at all. Like this gentleman said, the bridge there, a few years back, had to be repaired. I don't think the county comes out there and does anything at all, per se, but that's my only concern. That should not have any traffic on it at all.
I think that's a fair statement, stipulate. Regardless of the vote. Thank you, Mr. White. Is there anything new? Anything further?
I'm sorry to take up everybody's time. Again, my name's Randy Ward. Um, if everybody, have, have you all run, went down Ralph Ron Road? Have y'all driven down Ralph Ron Road? Lot of nice communities down through there. And look over there on, uh, uh, McCall. They put some nice communities over there. And you're putting a strip mine in the middle of all this. I can't believe we're sitting here, even here, thinking about it. I mean, I understand people want to sell the property, make money, and, I mean, that's the American way. But, we gotta do something about this. I mean, granted, Rankin is growing, Springfield's growing. But putting a strip mine in the middle of a residential area. And we don't even have the proper, uh, uh, infrastructure to support that. Now, I'm assuming when they build this, there's gonna be runoff protection because there is, my property butts up against the, uh, uh, watershed area. Uh, Little Ebenezer Creek. Um, I would think, I would hope that these people would control their runoffs.
Yes, sir, that's monitored by the state.
Well, okay. All right, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Do you have anything further? Mr. Metzger?
I can, uh, address a few of the, a few of the comments. So, uh, it was mentioned this was a slippery slope with, you know, industrial zoning and not knowing what's gonna happen. Um, you know, this is not new. This is something that the county's had in place for years and years. It's how we've done. I don't know how many, probably hundreds of surface mines in the county. Um, so this, this is a documented process, um, has to be rezoned. Conditional use, that's the only use it can be used for. It can't be used for any other industrial purpose. This is, this is for a surface mine, so, you know, a lot of this stuff we're talking about, added traffic, um, tractor trailers, you know, we're not doing that. This, there's no new people. This is just gonna be a surface mine. When it is finished, it'll be a pond. Um, about well water, um, drinking water, um, wells almost are always, uh, deep wells that go three-hundred to four-hundred feet down into the upper Florida and aquifer. These are confined, um, into limestone, um, cased, grouted. Uh, digging next to one, um, has no effect on it. Um, you would have to dig down three or four-hundred feet to affect a deep well that's next to a surface mine. Um, it's part of what's gonna happen with it after it's done, um, when the pond is permit, permitted through the state, through EPD, um, you have to show the size of the pond, the access road for the pond, um, how runoff will be pumped and filtered before it's left the site. Um, you also have to have a reclamation plan, and so that's gonna show the pond as it's being, um, finished. It has to be sloped and grassed. Um, EPD comes out and inspects it. Um, they also have a bond on it. So before they turn one shovel full, full of dirt and actually get their permit, uh, they have to have a bond with the state of Georgia. I believe it's eighteen-hundred dollars an acre. Um, and that's, you know, if they just went out of business and left town, then you could exercise that bond and finish sloping the project and close it out, so it would be, uh, safe and, you know, something that would be able to be left in place that wouldn't harm anybody. Um, stuff they'll do, uh, you know, they're, they're gonna use electric pumps instead of diesel-driven pumps. Um, that is a lot quieter. Um, they'll have, uh, water trucks on site to wet, uh, access roads to keep down the dust. Uh, they also have a street sweeper, uh, street broom. Um, and then they'll have a construction entrance that's maintained, and, and that's where they'll, uh, work to keep the, you know, the dust and sediment on their site, not out on the McCall Road. Um, looking up into county's ordinance, um, ponds, construction is allowed from eight to five, Monday through Friday. So, not at night, not on the weekends. Um, and somebody said, well, why don't he put it in his backyard? Well, he has a pit in his yard that's much larger than this pit and probably much closer than this pit. So, um, the operator is fully aware of, of what, you know, having a surface mine and a pond, um, next to him, how it affects res, residents. Um, access on the Race Path, they have no need for that. They don't want it. They're not gonna use it to access the surface mine. You can put that in there as a stipulation that no access will be provided on the Race Path. Um, as far as increased dump truck traffic, you know, they, they're, their dump trucks are gonna be on the road somewhere in the county. Um, not, they're not gonna be parked. They'll probably be, um, you know, running through this area anyway, delivering, delivering, um, dirt to residents, to subdivisions, to commercial developments. Um, so it's not like the trucks are gonna go away if, if this doesn't happen, so, um. I, I think that's a, I've addressed most of it I can. If you've got any other questions, I'd be glad to.
No, I have a question. Uh, so is the majority of the dirt sand that's going to the ready-mix plants for the construction of the Effingham Parkway?
Um, I believe they are wanting to sell it, and it would go to whoever wants to buy it for, um, they had mentioned that if, if it would, they had a contract, it could go to the Effingham Parkway, could go to, uh, subdivisions, it could go to whoever would wanna buy it.
Okay. Cause I was thinking there'd be a timeline that if it was for the Parkway, the majority of the dirt going to the Parkway, that was their biggest uh, contract, then that, that should be done in about a year and a half, two years. Wouldn't you say?
That's, I mean, that's the schedule.
Yeah, that's the schedule for the Parkway. So if they need concrete, they're gonna have to have sand to make the ready-mix up for the concrete.
This is mostly fill material, right?
No.
It's not gonna be concrete, so.
It's mostly gonna be structural fill material.
Oh, this is fill?
Yeah.
On the top?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's my question.
You have any questions?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to, I guess, um, I'm not making a motion yet, but I just wanted to clarify. So, with what you looked up, the timeframe-wise, is that what you're fine with?
I, I think that's what, I, I looked up the county's ordinance, and that's, that's what was, that's what was in there, and I think that's the standard one that's a part of every pond approval.
And I mean, and obviously that was adopted years ago for these situations just like this.
Right. I just wanted, uh, if we make some in the audience understand that that is the eight-five, Monday through Friday.
Mm-hmm. A, a, as far as I could tell just then, I mean, it may be, it may have had a different section, I was reading it on my phone, but that, it is stated explicitly in the ordinance, this is what's allowed, and that's part of every approval.
And I'm not saying whether this is going forward or not, but one comment I'd have when you get to designing, if you do finish the design on it, and this is just an ask, is I do think that the visibility from McCall Road, and this is the landscape architect in me, if you could put a little curve to it, right, so it's not a straight shot down that back to the plant, I think that would slow the trucks coming out. I think it would prevent the visibility of even seeing what's happening back there off of McCall Road. Um, so just, you know, that's just a request, if it moves forward, to consider doing that, cause I think you could basically make it where you didn't realize what was happening back there off of McCall Road with a little bit of change in that roadway. And my final question, I guess, was to staff, actually, with the, if, assuming the, the conditions that we had about the, um, number five with the surface mine operations, road maintenance requirements, and section seventy-four dash eight designated truck routes, that's, that designated truck route aspect of it, is just, we're just putting on notice of the requirements that are there. It's not saying that the designated truck route makes what they're trying to do not possible, assuming the zoning goes through.
Uh, correct.
Okay.
Anything further from the board? Any further questions?
I have another question. What about people's requirements that have flood insurance when the pond is done? So, if you live in this area and you have a big pond, would it have higher cost of fuel insurance?
So, so, uh, he, he was asking about flood insurance and creating a big pond, and does that increase the need for flood insurance? And it's, it's no, flood insurance is handled, is regulated by the federal government through FEMA. Um, they have maps, um, that designate the one-hundred-year floodways. Uh, this, this property is not in a one-hundred-year floodway. It's in a Zone X, which is outside of that. Um, so, no matter what you dig, um, it's, it's not gonna increase a flood, uh, flood rate or flood elevation or a need for flood insurance, um.
You're, you're excavating and not building a dam that would.
That's correct, yeah. We're, we're digging a hole.
Yeah.
That will, that will fill back up to the, to the water table, basically.
Yeah, and then it'll, it'll continue to drain like it does now.
Yes, ma'am, very quickly.
I was curious, so, when, if it gets dug and then filled by a pond, will it be private land? Will there just be a big, huge pond back there, or do you plan on making that, like, a city park or?
Um, I mean, at, at this point, I mean, it is being rezoned by a individual private company, so it will remain private until they so choose to possibly make it public in the future. Yeah, it'll be, um, their, their, their personal property. Yes, sir, very quickly, we're ready to wrap up public comment. I think we've.
Michael O'Connor, again. You mentioned, um, you discussed amongst yourselves the designated road. Can you explain that to us? Because I didn't understand any of it. That road, McCall is not a designated truck route, correct?
Currently.
This thing's gonna. Correct?
Originally, the Effingham Parkway was gonna run on the west side of the gas line all the way to Highway one-nineteen. Somewhere along the way, the funds run out. And so, it's coming into Blue Jay Road at the gas line, if you know where the S-curve is at Blue Jay?
I think so.
It's gonna be around about there. Then it's gonna, that road is gonna go through that new intersection, uh, that carries you to Rankin, where we had all the accidents until they put the huge flashing stop lines up. And then it's gonna go all the way to Highway twenty-one, and exit out on Highway twenty-one. That's the new proposed route at this time.
So how does that affect McCall and its designation?
Well, all the trucks that'll come down the Effingham Parkway is gonna come right down McCall Road, cause they got nowhere else to go.
So.
They can't get to twenty-one unless they go through Rankin, unless they go on a non-truck route.
Which.
Ron Station.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, I guess these are talking points for when you get to the county commissioners. Because we don't make those decisions.
Right. So will that be taken up as a proposal, the, the re-designation of McCall Road and Ralph Ron?
I can't answer that.
Before, this is approved?
My understanding from the county commissioners was only that McCall was to be upgraded. Um, I haven't heard anything about it being a designated truck route.
Redesignated as a truck route.
Or redesignated, yeah. I just heard upgraded, which it needs resurfacing. I mean, we all know that.
It's a mess, thanks to the mine down the other end of McCall.
So, my understanding was upgrade, resurface, um, bas, basically repair.
But not redesignate?
The, I can't answer that. I mean, I, I apologize, but I, I cannot answer that question.
The November first meeting can discuss that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, it's time when we'll close public comment, um. Any discussion amongst, anybody have any discussion?
No.
All right, I'll call for a motion. I'm gonna make a motion to approve with the stipulation it's only access from McCall Road. Have a motion to approve. Everybody understand the motion? Is there a second?
I second it.
Second, Mr. Zipper. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all.
Gee, thank you for your time, everyone. It was wonderful.
You're welcome. Number ten is a public hearing for the McGrady Company's agent for Richard Hall, requests approval for a pond less than one acre located on Horsepin Road. This is the fourth district. Ms. Dunigan?
Yes, sir. Uh, very similar to the last pond less than one acre. They are also the next item. They are applying to do a surface mine. And the site plan for the surface mine shows the pond less than one acre within the site. Um, but we just received the erosion control plan today. We have not had time to review it. And staff is recommending approval for the pond less than one acre.
Mr. Metzger?
Alec Metzger with EMC Engineering. Um, so this is a similar request to what we had before, um, but it is a little bit different. Um, um, so, both items, one is to construct a less than one acre pond to start with. Um, the second is to rezone a portion of the property industrial with the conditional use. Um, this pond is for, um, the landowner, so, um, even though they will operate it, dig it, sell the dirt, it is, the pond will be for this property owner for a recreational farm, uh, pond for his property.
Any questions, comments from Mr. Metzger?
It is quite a, quite a large buffer on the south side. Um, there's some, a lot of wetlands and a undeveloped tract, and then there's a quite a, quite a bit of wetlands on the north side, um, also that provide natural buffer for that property. Um, so it's only, only a portion of it will be used for the, for the pond and the surface mine.
All right, thank you, sir. So anyone else wish to speak either in favor or against this request?
My name's Benny Turner. I live on one-seventeen Little Horsepin Road.
Good evening, sir.
My concerns is like everybody else's. The traffic, I live. The traffic, I live directly in front of where that thing's going. Whereabouts, he's got the clear spot. Where's the pond going? My house is right there, and where are the trucks coming out?
Flip a sled, please. All right, so, uh, this, this is your house, I believe.
I live right here on the corner. I got the log house right there on, on the corner, ninety-four.
Uh, Mr. Turner, I'm sorry, we, I had to get you on, to come up to that, uh, microphone, please.
Talk into the mic, please.
Yes, sir.
I mean, my house is right directly across from where he had the place cleared. I'm assuming my house is right there. Is that Little Horsepin?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
My house sits right here on the corner of, of the property, and I just wonder where the pond, where the big pond's gonna be.
I mean, is it gonna be?
It's gonna be all the way in the back.
This corner right here?
It's about fifteen hundred feet from the road.
So it's gonna, where's the traffic gonna jump out?
It's gonna come along this property line.
So all the way down to that guy's house, and he's not here. Okay. I mean, I have concern with the property value dropping when they dig these things. I've been on that road, I've lived on Horsepin for over thirty. I remember when it was a ditch, basically. I mean, it's a good roads now, got no problem. But, and big trucks coming in, they don't tear a road up. I worked on big trucks my, all my life. But, um, property value, all the neighborhoods that live up and down, they built that brandy neighborhood down there, them trucks going out, they, and the people have to get their kids to school, school buses. I've got the same concern as everybody that's been up here. I feel like I got shafted, cause they all got to do it before I did. Anyway, I mean.
We're here to listen.
We just, I don't know. I built my house there by my hand, with my own hands, me and my wife. And I'm retired, and you can't go outside of your house and listen to all them trucks and stuff. I hope you don't hear it, but I guarantee you will. And the dust, I seen that other mine that they got down on the end of low ground. You can go out, when it comes on to thirty, I mean, not thirty, I had, um, Blue Jay, uh, he's the name of the guy, there's a big mine there. All the trees are white, all the trees are white, right at the end of low ground, the big, other end down there, where it turns out on the Blue Jay. It's a big mine down there. But all the trees are white and trucks coming in. They have a sweeper, and he's out there, he's out there blowing dust. I mean, cause I come by way to go home sometime, you know, but anyway, and I just wish Mr. Hall would've come and talked to me. He's talked to me before, when he's done things. This seems a little underhanded.
All right, I mean, there's still another meeting. Anyone else wish to speak? Questions, comments from the board? Call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve with staff?
The one acre, yep, just the one acre. Call for a motion.
Motion to approve with staff?
Have a motion for approvals, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Number eleven's a public hearing for the McGrady Company's agent for Richard Hall, requests to rezone twenty-seven point seventeen of sixty-four point eight acres from AR one to I one to allow for a surface mine located on Horsepin Road. This is the fourth district. Ms. Dunigan?
Yes, sir. So. This is the same site plan for the pond that was also submitted for the surface mine. This is a very similar staff report to the last surface mine staff report that you heard. The proposed surface mine is frontage on Horsepin Road, which is not, I know we've been talking a lot about designated truck routes. Horsepin Road is not a designated truck route. Um, there are, again, some substantial wetlands in one of the parcels that is part of the surface mine. And I would just point out, gentlemen, that while very many residents did receive, were in the two hundred-foot buffer to receive notification letters, the buffer stopped about right here, which left out the bulk of residential density. So, um, I could not speak to the neighboring community's feelings on that.
Can you say that again, Katie, what you just said about?
The two hundred-foot buffer stopped right about here for notification, so it did, for notification, leave out sort of the bulk of residential density in the surrounding area, just so you are aware. Staff is recommending denial.
So to clarify, you're saying the notice requirements of the law, two hundred feet landed in the middle of adjacent properties, so it didn't, all the letters didn't, they weren't required to be noticed?
Oh, you mean below drive wasn't required, I got you.
Right, correct, and that is Timberlake, Timberlake.
And why does staff recommend denial on this?
Staff is recommending denial because there is not, it is not on a designated truck route, um, because of the wetlands coverage, and maybe Teresa will help me out on this one and backing me up here.
Back from the Board of Commissioners, there's a good deal of concern about the effects of these trucks on roads, and Horsepin Road in particular is, is not a road that is built for this kind of traffic. So taking our lead from what we've heard from the Board of Commissioners, we've taken the, we've determined that it doesn't meet the usual requirements, and we couldn't recommend approval. Obviously, it goes before you and then the board, and they will listen to input and make their decision.
And again, as, as far as the future land use, it's, no industrial use is supported, it's all agricultural, residential, um, and it's pretty much, this is all surrounded by PD residential and AR one zoning.
Help me with my geography. Where, where's Horsepin connecting to, where's it gotta go, these directions, uh?
Down to the bottom is, I guess, Timber, is it Timber Gate? So it's really close to Blue Jay.
Gate, Timber Lake.
Timber Lake.
Timber Lake.
Lake.
Yeah, one of them.
Okay, right there, Blue Jay. Who's that considered, okay? Yeah, I was just, I, I really couldn't tell from the map. I don't have a good feel for exactly where that was, that's why I was asking.
You to go?
Uh, yeah, this, so this one's much smaller, um, about ten-acre pond. The substantial buffers to the north and the south, in, in addition to what's provided with the, uh, surface mine application. The wetlands, we're not proposing any wetland impacts, staying off of those, um, when those are delineated. And, uh, you know, road, the road is, is very close to Blue Jay Road. I don't know if it's, if Horsepin is on the county's list to repair or upgrade. I know most of them are, so, uh, I don't, I don't know what the county's plans are for that road.
Are y'all required to keep a bond on this and repair the road?
Uh, so the bond is for the pit, is for the mine.
None for the road.
It's not for the road.
We were doing that a while back on them.
Don't currently have that. That's been discussed, but it might become, who knows, it might become part of the ordinance revision, but that's part of the concern, is that there's not a.
I thought we were doing that before that.
We are not currently doing that.
So Alan, um, do me a favor. You see on the map, that subdivision, uh, to the bottom of the page, that's highlighted in yellow?
Mm-hmm.
So it's got two ponds in there. What would you guesstimate that acreage to be of those ponds? Five, five acres total, two and a half acres?
More than that.
Ten acres?
Yeah. Without, without those ponds, that whole area would've been underwater.
So those are probably five acres plus, guessing.
So that dirt had to be hauled out of there, didn't it?
No.
Well.
It was hauled in. If you go out those people's backyard, there's a four-foot drop-off. That's how low that land was. So they took those ponds and filled the land where they could build homes.
Took the dirt from the, there, from that site and, and then.
So it's a, it's a little bit of a mislaboring or misnomer when we talk about these surface mines and stuff, and stuff like that. So when you do a subdivision and you dig ponds, it's basically the same thing, um, but it's not controlled by the state, it's controlled by the county as part of the development process. So you, you can see on the aerial, you could count ten, ten borrow pits on just that picture right there, um, that's been used to fill property or create a pond. So this one just happens to be a little bit bigger, but it is gonna be, remain on his property for his use, um, when it's completed.
Yeah, my point was trying to be that we hauled that dirt on Har- Horsepin to, to excavate those ponds, but the, now, from Mr. Zipper's explanation, that property, that dirt didn't leave the property.
It, it didn't, but a lot more came in.
Yeah, it came in.
And, and I mean, I guess to part of the county's concerns about these roads, I mean, when you develop a subdivision like that, which Mr. Hall could do on his property, you know, you're bringing dirt in, you're, you're hauling trash out, you're bringing in concrete, you're bringing in lumber, you're bringing in, you know. And then, and then the traffic never stops, ever.
Right, so the houses have two and a half cars per house.
Forever.
Forever.
Can I ask?
So I don't know what temporary is, but this is forever.
Can I ask a question, just related to like that? The line of how you drew the line of where the pond was going to be?
Mm-hmm.
Was that based off of a soils report? That, that's where you found the good quality soils and you would stop there, or is?
I think they did do some soil investigation, but mainly it was he wanted it on the back of the property, and then he wanted it at least a hundred or a hundred and twenty feet off the back property line. Uh, so there is a larger buffer on the back. He just wanted it on the back of his property. So he owns the, the two tracks that are side by side.
All the way to Horsepin.
Mm-hmm.
So that's where you're creating this subdivision, that new line is the, the.
Yeah, that's right.
Or south line is the new line that's creating this parcel.
Yeah, so we're talking about just rezoning.
Yeah.
This, which is in the, the, that would be the permitted acreage for the pit.
But he also owns all that land all the way to.
This, this, that, the next one.
So it, it's way back in the woods, it'll be way away from everything.
Same comment, we can get a little wiggle in that road.
Our landscape architect tells me the same thing.
It's a good.
A little wiggle will make it not look like a straight shot.
Looks pretty, pretty straight in that map to me up there.
All right, Mr. Metzger, anything further?
Drink a beer when you grading it.
Any, uh, anyone else wish to speak either in favor or against this request? Call for a motion. I make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
I second it.
Second, Mr. Zipper, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried by all.
Ms. Dunigan, is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Sure.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
I don't get a raise, I think I'm.
You're welcome, too.
They're working me too many hours for minimum wage. I think we gotta win minimum wage lawsuit here. I don't think we being paid minimum wage. I don't think we being paid minimum wage.